And call this to order. So appreciate everybody being here this evening. We have a good agenda. We don't have a closed session unless Mr. Lawrence looks at me and gives me a thumbs down and says that we do. So I think we're good there. And so I appreciate everyone being here. We'll move expediently and efficiently and make some good decisions. So Ms. Getz, if you would please, actually, excuse me, before we do that, Archbishop Slater, our fire chaplain, if you would come lead us in an invocation, follow by the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sweetie.
Let us pray. Our Father, not God, we thank you for this moment that we have established this time to do business. Father, we need your guidance. We need your kindness. We need your favor. We ask you, Lord, to bless this council, Lord, and all that are here tonight, to continue to do the work, God, in your name, Satan. Amen.
Thank you. Please join in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, if you'd please conduct a roll call.
Mayor Gayler.
Present.
Mayor Protim Jones.
Present.
Councilwoman Boyet.
Present.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilwoman Matthews.
Present.
Councilwoman Weeks.
Present.
Councilman White.
Present.
All present and accounted for. Again, I appreciate the time commitment and I appreciate everyone being able to be here. Mr. Livingston, you mentioned two items that we would like to be able to walk onto the agenda with the consent of council this evening. One is a, it would be added as item 4.4. It is a proclamation recognizing red ribbon month, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then the other was just handed to you in hard copy, council. It would be added as item 9.1. It is a relatively simple piece of business for us. It is us approving a budget line item to be able to receive a grant for IT cybersecurity needs. And so we'll be able to hear from our IT director later on that as well. It's all budgeted funds. It doesn't come out of general fund.
It's been budgeted, yes, sir.
It has been budgeted, so we'll get to that in just a little bit. Are there any other items to be added to the agenda, Mr. Livingston or Ms. Getz? Nothing else? Counsel, are there any other items to be added or be removed from the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, or as modified.
So moved.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to adopt the agenda as modified. All in favor, please vote electronically if able. Say what? Keep us rolling. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes. All right, perfect. The motion, or the agenda is modified for those following along. Item 4.4 has been added. It's a proclamation recognizing red ribbon month, and item 9.1 has been added. It is a resolution accepting grant funds through North Carolina Office of Emergency Management for IT cybersecurity. So we'll get to that in just a little bit. We will begin with item 4 dot... Do you mean to pop that up there?
Something's happening to it. Sorry.
We're good. We will begin with item 4.1 and introduction of our stormwater administrator, Mr. Bobby Barnes. Mr. Livingston, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As part of our new thing that we'd like to do is introduce some of our new significant employees. Obviously, we can't do all of them, but since this is, Ms. Barnes is going to be running our stormwater program and under Jonathan's tutelage there, we thought it would be a good opportunity to introduce her and just, you know, there you go. Jonathan.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Yeah, so she is going to be looking after our stormwater management plan, our MS4 permit. She was with the Air Force for seven years, six years. She does have some stormwater experience. She comes with a little bit of experience, so that was good. She made the decision easy for us during the hiring process. If y'all have any questions for her, feel free to shoot them at her.
Hello, everyone. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
You as well.
Welcome.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for your service.
Welcome.
What was your, what was your time in the Air Force?
I was a meteorologist. Yeah.
Fantastic skill set to have on hand.
Yeah, it was very interesting.
Well, council, are there any comments, questions for Ms. Barnes?
I look forward to working with you and thank you for your service.
Thank you. I look forward to working with y'all.
Well, night one is easy. I'm sure we'll have something related to stormwater. It'll come back and have more discussion, but welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for being here. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. All right, now we'll move to item 4.2, Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation. I realize that we are approaching the conclusion of the first full week of October, but this is the first meeting, so let's do it. Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas each year, more than 10,000 women in North Carolina can expect to be diagnosed with breast cancer, and more than 1,500 will likely die from this disease. And whereas North Carolina women have a 1 in 8 lifetime risk of developing breast cancer, the second leading cause of cancer death for women in the United States. And whereas the North Carolina Breast and Cervical Cancer Control Program, NCBCCCP, in the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, provides free or low-cost breast and cervical cancer screenings and follow-up to enable uninsured and underinsured women. And whereas with routine mammogram screening and follow-up testing, the disease can be detected early so that it can be effectively treated and save lives. Whereas being aware of the health information, education, treatment, and support methods available can help individuals with breast cancer find and receive the appropriate care and resources they need to improve their quality of life. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Goldsboro City Council does hereby declare October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Goldsboro, and urge our fellow citizens to become aware of the impact that breast cancer has on our community, and to support the fight against breast cancer so that we may one day defeat this terrible disease. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and affix a seal to the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina. This is the sixth day of October 2025. All right. Now, we will move to...
Selling shirts at the fire department, too, if people are interested.
Come again? Madam, if you would, say that a little louder in the microphone?
We're selling shirts at the fire department for, you know, fundraising.
Always be closing. I get it.
Yeah, yeah, for cancer words. Just thought I'd throw it out there.
I like it. We'll move to item 4.3, National Bullying Prevention Month proclamation. National Bullying Prevention Month proclamation. Whereas bullying is a serious issue that affects individuals of all ages, especially children and youth, and can lead to long-term emotional, physical, and psychological harm. And whereas every child deserves to grow up in a safe, supportive, and respectful environment, whether at school, at home, online, or in the community. And whereas bullying can take many forms, including verbal, physical, social, and cyberbullying, and it is vital that we raise awareness, promote kindness, and take a stand against all forms of bullying. Whereas educators, parents, community leaders, and citizens have a shared responsibility to educate, support, and empower young people to prevent bullying. And whereas the city of Goldsboro supports local schools, youth programs, law enforcement, and advocacy organizations in their efforts to create safe, inclusive spaces for everyone. And whereas the month of October is nationally recognized as National Bullying Prevention Month, and communities across the country join together to promote kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Goldsboro City Council does hereby declare the month of October 2025 as National Bullying Prevention Month in the city of Goldsboro, and urge all residents to recognize the importance of standing together against bullying, to speak out with compassion, and to help make our city a place where all people are valued and respected. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and affix a seal to the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina. This is the sixth day of October 2025. Now... We'll move to item 4.4, Red Ribbon Week proclamation. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse have reached epidemic stages, and it affects individuals, families, and communities across the nation. And whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs and prevent drug abuse. And whereas Red Ribbon Week offers schools, students, and the community the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles. And whereas Red Ribbon Week will be celebrated in schools and communities across the nation on October 23rd through 31st. And whereas businesses, government, law enforcement, media, healthcare providers, religious institutions, schools, and other community-based organizations will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons and participating in drug prevention activities. And whereas it is the desire of this community that all citizens, especially our youth, live in safe, healthy, and drug-free environments and are supported in making positive life choices. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Goldsboro City Council does hereby declare October 23rd through 31st as Red Ribbon Week proclamation in the city of Goldsboro, and encourage fellow citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but also throughout the year, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free lifestyle. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and affix a seal to the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina. This is the sixth day of October 2025. Counsel, thank you. And as always, when there are things that you see that need recognition, please help myself and the clerk be aware and remain, remain aware. We will move to section 5 of our agenda, public hearings. Mr. Livingston, if you would get us started on item 5.1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Mark Helmer here to introduce the topic and kick off the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Hope everyone is well tonight. So our first case is annestation 0325, Stony Creek. This is located on the south side of Royal Avenue between North Drive and Lake Mark Drive. My understanding, this, this came before you last month. I'm not sure if you were properly briefed on it, but possibly, I would just like to reiterate that during our due process of this case, it was discovered that the railroad right-of-way is actually deeded property, and therefore DOT would need to sign the application. Planning staff has reached out to DOT, or excuse me, the railroad. The railroad has forwarded it to their legal counsel, so it could be some time before we hear back from them. We just, we do not know. And the, the property we're actually talking about that, that is deeded right-of-way to, to, we'll strip a land right here. So with that said, staff is recommending, we have a couple options for you. You can choose to conduct a public hearing, refrain from voting tonight, and then we'll bring the case back when we heard from the right-of-way legal division. And then have another public hearing if need be, or we can withdraw the applications sometime in the near future and bring it back with a right-of-way signature.
Mr. Helmer, given that we've had the, the public hearing on the agenda twice, I feel like it's been, you know, properly noticed, obviously, would it be acceptable for us to go ahead and have the public hearing, and then you be able to bring it back forward once we have heard from the railroad, and then be able to vote on the ordinance at that time? Would that meet all expectations?
Yes, sir. I think so. Fighting a legal counsel is in agreement.
That's fine. Okay. That's fine. If you're comfortable with that, council, unless anyone would like to state to the contrary, I would go ahead and move forward with the public hearing on item 5.1, and then after that, we'll entertain a motion to continue it until the planning department has been able to receive appropriate feedback from the railroad. Is that appropriate? All right, not hearing anything to the contrary. Mr. Helmer, brief, I think, was completely reasonable. So what do you say? We go ahead and open up the public hearing? So this is officially a public hearing, item 5.1, annex petition 3-25. It is a piece of property owned by the city of Goldsboro, just off of Stony Creek, located on the south side of Royal Avenue between North Drive and Landmark. Anyone to come forward and speak? Second call is for anyone to come forward and speak on item 5.1, annex petition 3-25 adjacent to Stony Creek. Third and final call is for anyone to come forward and speak on item 5.1, an annex petition labeled 3.25 adjacent to Stony Creek owned by the city of Goldsboro. Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. And Mr. Helmer, if you'll come back up, we're cruising. So with that, council, at this stage, obviously, we know that we will entertain a motion to continue this until such time as we have heard back from the railroad, but are there any questions from council on this piece of property, or Y annex, or any of those things? I think it's been discussed. All right, so council, do I have a motion to... All right, my motion's been made by Mayor Protim to continue until such time as we have heard back adequately from the railroad. Perfect. Motion's been made and properly seconded. Mr. Lawrence?
I'd prefer you just choose a date certain. That may not have any advertising issues. I don't think it would come up, but certainly better to do that. And then if you came back again and continued again, that's not an issue. Okay, so I'd prefer a promotion to give a date certain.
All right, then with that, Madam Protim, do you mind amending your motion to the first meeting in November? All right, Mr. Boyet, same second. All right, the motion has been changed to the, continue until the first meeting in November. And the reason for that is because that's when we traditionally have our public hearings. So, well, that one's not that hard. All right, motion's been made, properly seconded. Ms. Getz, is it stated for the record? You comfortable with it? All right, if you would please toss it up there. We'll ask council to vote. Is it popping up for you?
I voted.
You did?
Already voted. I see four so far, five so far.
And it's not popping up on mine. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. We'll entertain this item again at the first meeting in November. Perfect. So with that, we'll move to item 5.2. Would you mind briefing us on that?
Sir. This is U 6724, new street naming. Roadway runs from the intersection of Berkeley Boulevard, southeastward approximately 1,581 feet, linear feet to its terminus. DOT is requesting that Y3 Service Road, billed as part of U 5724, Central Heights Road realignment project, be assigned with a local road name to be chosen by the city of Goldsboro. The subject roadway, this is the U 574 roadway project here, the overall view. This is the railroad coming through here. The new Central Heights roadway alignment comes across, well, comes down this side of the tracks now as opposed to the south side. And then you, Y3 Service Road is this area right here in green. Here's a close view of this. So Y3 Service Road is requested to be named with a local name. The following names have been presented for consideration and naming of this new section of road. Yellow Poplar Road, River Birch Road, Sweet Gum Road, Hack Berry Road, and Resilience Way. Planning staff recommends Resilience Way based on received public comment and opinion, and comment. Plan commission was asked to recommend a street name based on the names provided, and voted 4 to 1 to favor recommending Resilience Way, as the new name, street currently identified as Y3 Service Road. The city council's requested to conduct a public hearing and make a decision to adopt an ordinance renaming the new street identified as Y3 Service Road. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any comments, questions for Mr. Helmer? All right, hearing none, we will open the public hearing. This is now a, an open public hearing, item 5.2 on our agenda. It is a new street name within the city of Goldsboro as briefed by Mr. Helmer. Is anyone to come forward and speak? Second call, anyone to come forward and speak on item 5.2? Third and final call, anyone to come forward and speak on item 5.2, a new street name? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Say again? Say again?
If, if, if you would, just address us on all, I don't want to get too...
Mayor, I'm so sorry. Counsel members, everyone, this is my first meeting I'm attending. Reference that road. I guess Resilience Way is going to be the name.
All right. Give me a second for them to...
And to get the timer.
I apologize.
And while we're waiting for that, would you like him to state his name and address for you for the record?
That would be great. Let me get IT. IT, can y'all reset, please? Thank you.
It's five minutes.
Yes, and it should be five minutes.
We're going to make sure you get, get all your time. Yeah. Well, it's yours if you want it.
I see that. Okay, now we're good.
All right. My name is Donald Fason. I live in La Grange, and I own one of the properties that the new road is going to be named. And I'm gathered that, I gather that the name is going to be Resilience Way. Is that going to be the name?
That's up for discussion this evening. Yes, sir. That is what is proposed by planning.
Okay. It's a long time coming. That's all I'm going to say, Mayor. It's a long time coming. We've had a lot of issues with this. And my question, after the road is named, how long will we, before we can get an address?
Mr. Livingston, do you mind taking that question?
I will try. It's more of a planning-related question. I have to go back to my, you know, they have to...
He's still here.
Yeah. I would, I'd rather have Mark answer that question.
I'll tell you what, don't, don't come up yet. Let's make sure that you're able to make any other comments and questions. And then at the end of it, we are going to have Mr. Helmer back up to continue his brief. Are there any other questions or comments?
No other questions, that's all. I'm trying to get my clients, my tenants, an address.
We are expediting as fast as we can. We've had meetings with them, and we're pushing the post office, but I'll let Mark address the process.
Let's see if there's anyone else to come forward and speak, and then when we close the public hearing, I'll ask Mr. Helmer to come up once and then address everything. Yes, sir.
There's an email chain going on, going around with about 10 or 15 of us in that related to that. And I believe Ms. Choice, our development services director, has recently communicated with the postmaster and has that information to move forward.
I have to say, in the past week, there's been a lot of movement. It was kind of like at a standstill with us before. We didn't know what was happening. And I thank the city for acting recently, in the past week, for doing what they've done to actually help us out quite a bit. And I think they can attest to that, okay? Because we kind of felt like we were left alone, and no one knew what was going on, but thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Livingston. All right, that's it.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make sure. You say you own properties on the new road?
Extension, yes.
Okay. I just, I just didn't hear that. I want to make sure.
Yes.
You own properties there. Okay.
Thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone else to come forward and speak on item 5.2? New street renaming what was a service road, Y3. All right, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Mr. Helmer, if you don't mind coming forward, a question was raised, I'll simply restate it. What's the process for getting actual postal addresses now, and what's the general timeframe?
So we already have an address scheme prepared. We'll be sending out first-class mail tomorrow to the property owners, and we'll be hand-deliver letters to the tenants tomorrow as well. And then soon after that, street signs will go up once the roadway is finished.
Fair enough. All right, council, any other comments, questions for Mr. Helmer? All right, hearing none. I'll let you head back to a seat, council. We, Mr. Livingston, I am appropriate to call a vote on this ordinance tonight, right? Mr. Livingston, I'm looking at one of y'all to make sure.
Yes.
Yes, right.
Have you closed the public hearing?
I did. I did. Before, before we called Mr. Helmer back up, we did. All right, council, there in our packet, there is an ordinance included with this item that is an ordinance naming a new street within the city of Goldsboro. Is there a motion to either table this, approve this, something?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I will make a motion that we accept this item as presented for approval, and then I'll have a comment.
All right.
Linda Thompson.
Okay, in a second. All right, motions have been properly seconded to, I'm restating, motions have been properly seconded to accept the ordinance as presented. All right, perfect. I will go into debate. Is there any comments or debate?
I was just going to make a comment that this is kind of unique to watch this come together. This was brought to my attention, a constituent of Councilwoman Matthews had reached out to her with issues with this that I didn't even, I wasn't aware about, and I guess maybe not too many other folks were as well. And once we got the ball rolled, and I guess it's been 30 days or less, there's been at least a dozen or more people between the state and the city and the post office that's had to come together on this and got it resolved. And it just goes to show that, you know, working together, we can get things done once we know that there's an issue. So I appreciate Councilwoman Matthews reaching out. So I appreciate Councilwoman Matthews reaching out to me on behalf of her constituent and letting me know that there was an issue, and then once we got the ball rolling, we got it taken care of. So I'm, I'm happy that that's going to be resolved.
Counsel, any other comments, questions? If not, we will call the vote. Please vote electronically if possible. Alright, vote and have a mentality, all in favor, the motion passes unanimously. We have a new street name. Thanks, everybody. Alright, now we will move to our public comment period. And as Ms. Getz is walking back over, if anyone neglected to sign up that intended to, please do.
Our first speaker is Raylan Mosher.
Before, before we get going, I apologize, the, as before, the policy, let's get that back up on the screen, just to make sure that we're, we're staying consistent. And speakers are asked to be civil and courteous in their language and presentations at all times. Speakers are asked to refrain from personal attacks and/or threats directed towards any council member. The mayor, city staff, and the members of the public, vulgar and profane language and gestures will not be tolerated. And speakers are asked to please address the mayor and council and refrain from addressing the public behind them. So with that, we have the policy up on the screen. Ms. Getz, please proceed.
Our first speaker is Raylan Mosher.
My name's Raylan Mosher, and I'm the owner of Raylan Mosher Counseling Services located at what was formerly known 3002 Central Heights Road, sharing an office space with Candra Edwards of Healing While Counseling Services. At the moment, our business does not have an address, but it sounds like tomorrow we will. I'm here tonight not just as a business owner, but as a licensed clinical social worker. My professional code of ethics requires me to advocate on macro, meso, and micro levels for communities, for organizations, and for individuals. The purpose of my comments is not to harp on what's already happened, but to shine light on the communication breakdowns we've experienced so that changes can be made to prevent this from happening to anyone else. During the Central Heights Road Realignment Project, communication between NC DOT, the city, and affected property owners had been non, had been inconsistent at times and accurate. This lack of clear timelines created significant and dangerous disruptions for us. Periods of no access to our building, making it difficult for both staff and clients to enter safely. Clients with physical disabilities have been placed at risk navigating unsafe or unclear access points. Mail interruptions directly affecting our ability to receive income in a timely manner. Falling out of compliance with insurance contracts, a situation that puts us at risk of contract termination, leaves clients without access to vital mental health care. Being in violation of several city, state, and federal laws, simply because of an address, simply because not having an address and access issues outside of our control. These are not small inconveniences, these are systemic failures that could have been avoided with better coordination between DOT and the city, more accurate timeframes, and more permanent road closures, and a timely city action to name and assign addresses to the roads. The delay in assigning an address has left us and likely others without mail service, emergency service clarity, or reliable client access, all of which are critical to opening a healthcare practice, or operating a healthcare practice. I want to be clear, I am not assigned, not here to assign blame, I'm here to call for better systems. I truly believe that with stronger communication protocols and earlier coordination, no business or resident should have, should ever find themselves in this position again. Before I close, I wanted to take a moment to express my gratitude to the individuals who took the time to meet with us on Friday, September 24th, and I hope I don't miss anybody, but we had April Choice, Jennifer Collins, Matthew Livingston, Mark Helmer, Kelly Arnold, Jonathan Perry, Jason Lee, Matthew Clark, Brandon Herring, Michael O'Quillan, and a special thank to Brandon, Kelly, Jonathan, Michael, and Jason, who came out to our office afterwards to walk the site, look at potential drainage issues, review the deteriorating driveway transition, and address the mailbox placement. That level of responsiveness is exactly what we needed, and we truly appreciate it. My hope is that tonight's conversation helps move us toward clearer policies, stronger communication, proactive planning, so no other businesses, resident, or client has to face the same disruptions we've endured, and we greatly appreciate you adopting the name that we had recommended because it has definitely tested our resiliency in this process. We accept stress balls, would be really great, you know, candy, chocolate, stuff like that. They make us very happy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Candra Edwards.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Candra Edwards, and I'm the owner of Healing While Counseling Services, and I am rooming with Raylan Mosher, with Raylan Mosher Counseling Services, and so if I could stand up here and complain, I guess I can also stand up here and say thank you guys for all of what you have done to move and push the ball along. It's been hard for us, and I know that it's been stressful for all of you. I do apologize for the numerous emails, but I do appreciate Mr. Chris for kind of constructing that for us. But today, we do stand here and we're deeply appreciative of everything that you, you have done for us. It has impacted our businesses, both me and Raylan. It has impacted a lot of our clients who do have those gate issues, who just weren't able to make it to their appointments. But I guess this will be a moment here for you guys to pat yourselves on the back. I do want to also reiterate that there are some things that are more helpful than sending an email, and we do want to show our appreciation for Mr. Livingston for driving out there and just putting your eyes on the matter. We do appreciate Jonathan, Trey, and Scott, and anybody that touched their boots, I guess boots on the ground, I guess that's what this is here, but we do appreciate them coming out to the, to the building and seeing exactly what the problems were and making some adjustments and changing, changes for our business to flow a little bit better. So, thank y'all, I appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Donna Countryman. Mayor, Ms. Countryman has some photos that she'd like to share. So I'm going to put the timer up on my phone while IT puts up her pictures.
Mr. Mayor, city council?
Give me one second. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Mayor and city council, I'm Donna Countryman, it's me again, and I'm here to talk to you about our Night to Shine fundraiser, which is our dinner variety show that's coming up October the 17th. It'll be held at the First Baptist Church in downtown Goldsboro, and we're inviting every one of you to attend, bring a date, have a good time. We have approximately twenty people that are, be showing their talents. We have around ten special need honored guests who are going to display their God-given talent, and it's, it's a night that you will not want to miss. This will be our fourth time doing this fundraiser, and our very own mayor is our Masters of Ceremonies that evening, and we're very appreciative of your time and your talent, being Masters of Ceremony. And we, as I said, we really just want you to be a part of it, wanted you to know about it. If you didn't know about it, we've been blasting it everywhere, and we just thank you for your support that you've given us over the year. Some of our performers are singers, dancers, we have a Christian magician, we have a ventriloquist, we have people playing instruments, handbells, piano, the works. You will not be sorry that you came. Tickets are available online, and I'll just pass that out to Laura so you can get them on, on, with the QR code, if you happen to be around, I am available for tickets as well, so we'd love to have you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Donald Fason. Our last speaker.
Alright. Counsel, we'll close our public comment period and move into our consent agenda. Mr. Livingston, if you would please deliver a brief, and hear any remaining questions.
Thank you, Mayor, council. We have six items on the consent agenda, three of them are certificate of sufficiencies for annexations. One is approval of minutes, and the other two are execution of a pocket park agreement, which we've all been waiting a long time to do, and a resolution authorizing the city to accept the rural downtown economic development grant for Goldsboro Union Station, which we've discussed in the past. It's basically a re, making sure that we're dotting the Ts and crossing the Is, so to speak, or, I'm sorry, dotting the Is and crossing the Ts. That grant, and making sure we have all our paperwork in order.
Alright, and counsel, obviously this has been presented and everyone's had a chance to ask questions. The certificates of sufficiency, with those next, we'll move before actually setting the dates, correct? Perfect.
After that, yes.
After that, and then we'll, then we'll have them up here, you know, three more annexation opportunities, or petitions, so. Good stuff. Counsel, any remaining comments or questions on items presented on the consent agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Stay moved.
Alright, motion's been made, Councilwoman Weeks, and seconded by, by Councilwoman Boyett, to approve the consent agenda as presented. If we vote electronically, it counts as a roll call vote, so if everyone put, would please cast their vote, and then we'll have a roll call record.
I voted, but it's not, it never pops up.
Madam, we got a few, please, or Madam Clerk, if you could just conduct a roll call real quick.
Mayor Gayler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Jones?
Yes.
Councilwoman Boyett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matthews?
Yes.
Councilwoman Weeks?
Yes.
Alright, motion passed unanimously, consent agenda is approved. We will move to old business, item eight dot one, Mr. Livingston.
So Mayor, this was from the last meeting we had, we discussed the pavement preservation program and made some recommendations to you, so we're coming back tonight with a little bit of an update on that. I think Jonathan's here, and as well as Catherine is here too, to kind of go over some of the financial questions that were brought up at the last meeting.
Would you like to begin with Catherine?
Catherine's first, yes.
Ms. Glenn, welcome back, it's good to see you again.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Good to be here. Okay, so I prepared some summary slides for you, just to kind of recap where we started, and I wanted to start with the budgeted numbers. So in the manager's recommended budget, I presented you the revenue and expenses, and then also the adopted budget. So it was a minor change, really, the whole program to fund the streets is about 3.8 million, and like I said, it went up about 13,000. Just below that, with the street maintenance, I listed each division. So street maintenance is our salaries and benefits and our operating expenses for that street pavement program. Street utilities, those are our streetlights. It's, I think it's a significant cost, it's 600,000. Then the street pavement is what we discussed, the 1.2 million. And then, of course, just the debt service on the streets for the existing debt that we have, so that totals about 3.8 million. And then when we rolled into the adopted budget, there was a little bit of change in street maintenance, primarily dealing with the bonus that we appropriated, and then I wanted to true up the street paving with what the POW bill, what we expected for the POW bill appropriation. Okay, and then the next one, I wanted to break down the categories, so the same 3.8 million, how does it break down when you add all those divisions up? Of course, the division that does street maintenance, that's your salaries and benefits, your operations and your capital. Streetlights, that's its own, street paving, and then debt service, and then, of course, you can see relative, the percentage of the pie chart there, just, just to give you a different perspective of how those expenses break out. Okay? And then I wanted to provide you a timeline. At the time I was asked to prepare this, the agenda was already due, so I didn't have a chance to go back and look when the pavement condition survey was actually presented to council, but it was back some time ago, so I apologize, I just, I was in a hurry trying to get this done. So it did identify the $3 million in needs for us to get to that level that we wanted to be comfortable with. And then, of course, Jonathan, as the department head, prepared the request for street paving at 3.3 million in the department request that went to the manager's office. I just presented you the manager's recommended budget, which said 1.2 million. And then in our council budget work session, we also discussed the 1.2 million, and then Matt, at the time, proposed that action plan of coming back in the fall with a street pavement, repavement program. And then, of course, the adopted budget showed 1.2 million, and then staff presented on 9/22. So we've tried to be very consistent with that 1.2 million dollars in funding. And then I also reached back into the accounting records to provide some context. So our accounting records go back thirty years, so beginning of time for us is 1996. And then I pulled just street paving and street construction out, and so you can see from 96 up through 2025, and you can see, basically, there was a decade, absolutely nothing got spent on street paving. So even in a thirty-year timeframe, we've spent 8.4 million, okay? When you had the pavement condition survey presented to you, they told you about 32, 33 million, and in thirty years, we've spent 8.4 million. So this council is trying to correct a problem that's been building decade after decade after decade. So I thought that was a really good slide because it did show, and as you can see in fiscal 19, which is actually the first year that I got here to work at Goldsboro, and then in 22, we had the two biggest years of expenditures, and that, that was from the street geo-bonds that the city took in 2018 that they issued, and then we were able to do. So you can see, we were able to accomplish, because we could have spent probably a little bit more, but it takes a while to get that much street paving done. So we had our two highest years that you see, of course, in that big spike in that graph, so I thought that was a very telling graph in, in relation to the 32 million that we needed to spend. And then I just provided you, this was a slide from the PowerPoint from the 5-5 meeting where we talk about the 1.2 million, and then again, the PowerPoint that I prepared for the 5-19 million talks about the 1.2 million in street paving. And then my last slide, so just to recap, it, it just, I've talked about all of this. The, the big thing is the $3 million represents the identified annual need, not the actual funding level, and that was the purpose of coming back in the fall, is to present council some options. We've presented a cash option, we've presented a debt option. For the council to get to that $3 million of spending, and then that recurring plan where we fund it, get the streets fixed, and then in ten years, we come back again to try to keep up with the paving that we need to do. And so Matt and I and Kelly had talked about, how do we identify, because, you know, you have to tease some of this information out of the records, how do you make it where we could really see it very easily? So we talked about it, I suggested doing a special revenue fund, Matt was okay with that, I have okayed it with the auditors that it is appropriate. They've agreed, they said that is, it's unusual, but it's okay to do because that way we can isolate, if you asked, we can go to that fund and specifically tell you what we spent in the street repavement program. So I will be coming back at some point in time this year, hopefully sooner rather than later, to establish a POW bill fund where we can track those dollars, and then it's very easy, because you'll be able to point it out very easily in the financial statements. Right now, it's buried in the general fund, so it is a little hard to tease out sometimes, and it's hard for you to be able to show it to your constituents to say, this is how we've spent our dollars for street repavement or through that program. So any questions for me?
I'll start with one, just to get us going. Do you mind going back to your first slide? That one helps me, keep going. That one, right there. That one helps me tremendously. So the street paving, the 4136, the 1.1.212, so that one, POW bill, right there, street paving, and Matt, I'm phrasing this incorrectly, but it's intended to be a question, street paving is stuff that we have to contract out, because we, we don't have rollers and...
That, we do contract out, and that's what we're wanting, you know, that, to adopt that street paving program.
Street maintenance, the other 1, 1, 1,239,000, what kind of things can happen if you need to, you know, phone a friend on this one, I don't blame you sitting back there?
Well, I can handle that one.
What falls under, what can be done under maintenance? Because I realize we have those people on staff that do jobs every single day.
Well, you know, that's your street sweeping, that's your pothole repairs, curb cuts, and things like that.
Okay. So the, the major, the major fixes that are smaller, that are not tearing up and redoing a whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's the difference between maintenance, and it's all going towards keeping streets or getting streets into an acceptable format, but that's kind of where we're doing the divi- okay.
A good analogy would be like, okay, you got a few shingles on the roof you're having to repair versus stripping the whole roof down and putting a new roof on.
Okay. Okay.
Be maintenance to the roof, the potholes and curb cut repairs, things like that would be more maintenance.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, didn't mean to hijack the conversation. Counsel, comments, questions? Yes, sir?
Um, I had shared earlier with...
Um, I had shared earlier with Matt and Catherine that I appreciated this presentation because reviewing the information allowed me to understand where I got off track a little bit with my assumption of numbers, which doesn't change the fact that, that number that I found out that we're at is not adequate, and we have to figure out, in my opinion, forthwith how to get to at least a minimum amount that's going to take us to stop moving backwards, which was the 3.2, I believe. And I know I've said it a ton of times since we've been elected, this last council was seated, there, there's a lot of things, the city was literally falling down around us when we showed up, and we're, we're doing everything we can to put it back together in, in a, in a timely fashion and being mindful of revenue. And one thing that I think is important, as we're continuing to get our arms around our utility side with distribution and collections and getting, getting those, that kind of maintenance. Every time we have a broken pipe and we got to tear up a street, that's money out of that fund that's got to fix the street back that there was probably nothing wrong with, that we could have spent that money somewhere else. So that is an important component of it. But I, I would, I would just also like to say, particularly to the public that's watching, we didn't get here overnight, as I've said, and page 100 of this agenda is right there plain as day. There's 30 years, basically, of, of, of revenue that's been spent. And when, when you got, whether it's your house, or your car, or this city, and you have 10 years or more to where no, not zero, not a dollar, not 50 cents, zero was spent, it, it just amplifies the position that we're in as this council, trying to get this ship turned back in the right direction. And I, I believe that we're going to get there, and I'm looking forward to being a part of figuring this out, because I'm sure that the other six of us sitting up here are getting phone calls all the time, because that's something that our citizens can, should be, the least that they can ask for is to be able to drive down the street without the front end falling out from under their car. That's my comment.
Counsel, any other comments, questions at this time? Hearing none, is counsel able to make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented in, in our packet?
So moved.
All right. Motion's been made and properly seconded to adopt the resolution as presented in our packet. This is the itemized list of projects to be addressed with the, the 1.2 this year. Ms. Getz, if you would, please. Uh, sorry, motion's been made and properly seconded, is there any debate?
I'm sorry, I was typing, who?
No, your, your motion was made, Councilwoman Weeks, and then Pro Tim Jones seconded. Is there any debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. Madam Clerk, when you can. All, all, you good?
I've, I've got one, I'm missing one more.
Oh, the good old days, when we could just vote.
Yeah. All in favor, please raise your hands.
It's suspense.
All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. It was working so smoothly.
There.
And then, there we go. All right, lovely. All right, Mr. Livingston, we'll move to item eight dot two, Brownfields Grant Assessment with Mid-Atlantic Associates.
We have April Choys, she's going to be administering this program for, on behalf of the city. She's going to brief us on that, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Gayler, Mayor Pro Tim Jones, and council members. I'm, I'm here tonight to introduce the consultants that we want you to consider to be the technical assistance professionals for the EPA grant. As, just as a reminder, you know this, but we, in the fall of 2024, we received $500,000 in EPA brownfield assessment funds. So what this grant will help us to do is begin to identify properties for redevelopment that will lead to community transformation and economic development. So we thank you to Downtown Development, they did the heavy lifting on this, and Development Services will be taking over from here. They, they did the heavy lifting on the RFP process. And so we had eight consultants to submit proposals to us. We followed the city's procurement processes, we had a grading scale based on the evaluation criteria that is listed in the RFP, and we narrowed it down to one. Mid-Atlantic stood out for us. Everybody, most, most of the professionals were qualified, but we chose Mid-Atlantic Associates. They are here today to present to you a presentation talking about their company, what they do, and the services that they will provide based on the grant. So I will introduce to you Nolan Barefoot, and he will do a presentation.
Hey, good evening, Council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come speak this evening. Also, congratulations on the awarding of the, the grant from, from EPA. I'm excited about the, the benefit and the economic development that it could bring, and appreciate y'all's consideration and the opportunity to help y'all with the, with the management of it. I'm Nolan Barefoot, I'm senior project manager for Mid-Atlantic Associates. My colleague Darren McClure, one of our principal engineers, joins me. And I'll start by telling you a little bit about Mid-Atlantic. We were founded in 1993, we're a full-service environmental consulting and engineering firm. We're headquartered in Raleigh, less than an hour from here, but a, a significant portion of our work is here in eastern North Carolina. Darren's an eastern North Carolina native himself. And brownfields consulting is one of our core services. We've been doing it since the Brownfields, Brownfields Act was first enacted, both at the state level with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, but also with the EPA. We've assisted with managing over 20 different cooperative agreements, which is the EPA's technical term for a grant, both in, for assessment, which is what Goldsboro was awarded, as well as cleanup grants that were awarded after the assessment was conducted to, to augment the, the progress that had already been made. We consider ourselves to be one of the, the most experienced preeminent brownfields consultants in, in the region. And it's our experience that has put us in, in a, in a great position to, to really guide you guys and help get the most benefit and maximize the amount of use of these funds. Here are a couple examples of municipalities that we've worked on behalf and helped administer and manage their assessment grants, and in multiple cases, additional funds that were awarded afterwards. And you can see a lot of those relationships extend far beyond just the three or four year grant period. Clients appreciate our communication, our dedication to, to their best interests, and our ability to extract as much value out of, out of the grant as we possibly can. So a, a little bit about myself, I, I'd be serving as the, the chief, the chief manager for implementing the grant, the day-to-day, coordinating with April and her team on site selection and performance of the actual assessments, coordinating fieldwork, also writing some of the assessment reports myself. Darren would be the program director. Darren has been working on municipal grants since 2005, he's one of the most experienced consultants in, in the region. He would be also spearheading the community engagement and, and stakeholder interaction efforts, which I would also be participating in, but Darren will be leading. Dan Nielsen's another one of our principal engineers, he's a brilliant technical engineer, he'd be serving as our QA QC officer and helping develop scopes for sites that we've identified as contaminated or potentially contaminated. And then Jessica Single, who is actually in our satellite office in Wilmington, she's our grant specialist, her experience is entirely focused in the grant realm, not only in the management and implementation of it, but also in the procurement process. She is a master grant writer and is very adept at coming up with ways to procure more funds and, and keep the momentum going. So you, you might be familiar with it, but if not, a real quick overview of what a brown, what is a brownfields? It's an abandoned, unu, underutilized or idled property where the, where real or perceived contamination is a hindrance towards redevelopment. These are often properties that have either had historical uses that handle hazardous materials, or they're adjacent or nearby sites that have, have done the same. Gas stations, dry cleaners, old industrial, these are, these properties are often in very attractive locations, they often have historical significance, they often have unique architecture, and figuring out what contamination is present on the site, if it's there, the extent of it and, and the nature of it can allow us to come up with creative solutions. How can we put the, the site back into productive reuse? That's ultimately the goal. And, and usually, the redevelopment of these properties can, can really spur some momentum in developing properties around it. And so it can, can really be, you know, momentous for, for an area such as Center Street, which already looks great. As you know, Goldsboro was awarded $500,000 assessment grant, there's no match required, it's unencumbered, and this covers assessment activities only. I'll go over in a second very briefly about what activities we can perform under this grant. You'll see that the grant period started in 2024, so we are ways into the grant period. However, because of our experience with, with working with the EPA and with the, the process, we see no issues in being able to utilize all the funds and get as much benefit out of this, as we can. So owning a brownfield, it comes with certain liability concerns, you know, property owners don't know what contamination is there, they don't know what it means, and often that just leads to inaction. This answers some questions, gets rid of some uncertainties, and lets them, makes them aware of the options that are available to them. It also removes some concerns about passing the property on to their children, making it their, their heir's problem. It, it gives people a, it gives property owners an opportunity to facilitate a, a property transaction that they maybe thought was not possible due to the site possibly being contaminated. And it also has the, the potential to answer questions where, that, that can lead to the reappraisal of the property that was initially thought to be contaminated and decreased in value and, and appropriately assess the, the true value of the property. This, the program, brownfields can, obviously, it helps protect the community and prevents exposure, that's the first concern. But it also preserves the environment, that's obviously, you know, through cleanup grants, if they can be awarded afterwards, but also in disincentivizing the development of greensfields. This is, you know, infield development, it's making good use of already developed area that's usually in a great location, so it's, it's efficient and, you know, like, as I've previously mentioned, it can reduce financial obstacles, liability concerns, and, and risk and uncertainty. These are the, the services that are, we're able to offer under the, under the grant. They are typically the first steps in a property transaction for a commercial property. However, they are often the first obstacle to those transactions, and so being able to approach property owners and say, we can take care of these first steps for you at no cost to you, it, it brings tremendous value. And we've found that, you know, we're in the business of relationships, and if you take the time to have a conversation with the property owner and explain to them the benefits of allowing the city to, to perform these services for them at no cost to them, often they're very amenable, they understand, and they typically reap the rewards from it. And if it's not in their best interest, we will certainly tell them that too. We have their interest, best interest and the city's best interest at heart. I have a couple examples here, in the interest of time, I, I don't know if y'all want me to, to go through them, but they're examples of brownfield sites in other towns in eastern North Carolina where we've been able to come in, put, use the assessment grant funds to characterize contamination on site, apply for additional funding afterwards that helps facilitate the cleanup of the, the materials, and ultimately put the property back in reuse. Hotel Louise is a notable one in downtown, in downtown Little Washington. That has now been fully remediated from lead-based paint and asbestos, and is, has been redeveloped into a 40-plus apartment multifamily building in downtown, and it, and it has been, and sold, and is now back in reuse. We're currently assisting City of Havelock with a, a $4 million cleanup grant from HUD, following an assessment grant with the City of Havelock to have the Phoenix landfill cleaned up. And then River Landing in Williamson, again, putting the site through the assessment process, getting it under a brownfields agreement, removing liability concerns, and, and putting it back into productive reuse. And so lastly, I'll leave you with why us. Again, we have extensive brownfields experience, we've been doing this since brownfields first began. We have, we, we treasure our relationships with municipalities and really find it, get the most satisfaction out of helping the, the city get the most benefit out of this grant and, and maximizing what we can do with it for you. And that, I open it to, to any questions that you all might have.
Counsel, comments, questions?
I, I, I thank you very much. You answered the questions that I had about the liability issue, the match, and what requirements do you use to target the areas?
Sure. Well, we ask, get input from the city. What is your target area, and what are your priority sites? And then we basically work off of those. You know, what, what areas is the, is the city interested in revitalizing, and we work on your behalf. It's, you know, what you guys ask us to do. And so we typically form site reconnaissance, boots on the ground, we use GIS software to log properties, parcel information, PIN numbers, pictures, aggregate that, and, and present it to the city and say, which properties are you most interested in, in assessing and wanting to redevelop?
Sort of answer that question is, we have known sites with contamination. For example, Tent City was, you know, it's an area that's been contaminated for years and years, and we have several of those that we're going to work with them and let them know.
And the stakeholder group will come up with a, a ranking criteria that the city will, will come up with and that we can use to evaluate sites and which ones are the most important, which ones are going to bring us the most benefit, bring y'all the most benefit.
One more question.
Sure.
Do we have ways, the city, to make sure that they're in compliance?
We do, but mostly, you know, that's a, it's a regulatory, they have to work within, especially when you're talking about cleanup, you're getting to, into circular law, which is the Comprehensive Environmental Liability, something civil act. But we, we monitor them as well, but it's, their, their role right now is to assess, so it's not to the cleanup point yet with this grant. So, yeah.
Thank you.
What sort of times, if we were able to vote on the resolution this evening and be able to exit a contract this week, what sort of timetable would you anticipate us being able to take a look at a list of potential sites? Is it, you know, six, eight months, or how far down the line?
Oh, right away. We actually took a couple hours to drive around this afternoon and go ahead and start putting the list together. We can have it to you this, we could have it to you this week.
Nice.
Yeah, absolutely. So we, yeah, I mean, we, we would like to move fast, and like I said, you know, we're a little bit into the grant period, so I think we'd benefit the city as well, so yeah, we can get moving.
November and December, a little more complicated. That's a good thing, that's a good thing. Counsel, any other comments, questions? All right, hearing none, I think you're relieved right now. Mr. Livingston, anything else for you to add?
This time.
Thank you all.
All right. So Counsel, item eight dot two is presented, resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for Mid-Atlantic Associates, Inc. to provide technical assistance and oversight of the EPA Brownfields Assessment Grant. Again, this is not getting into the remediation, this is purely assessing and figuring out what our next steps are. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as presented?
So moved.
All right, motion has been made and properly seconded? All right, motion's been made and properly seconded to adopt the resolution as presented in our packets this evening. Ms. Getz, all right, we got, perfect, please vote electronically if you are able.
I don't have anything.
And yours didn't pop up. Would you mind just stating your vote for the record?
Yes.
Yes, all right. So all being in favor, the motion is passed unanimously, the resolution is approved. All right. Let's move, and, and y'all, thank you for your time this evening. Thank y'all. All right, let's move to item eight dot three. Mr. Livingston, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we have Aaron here to kind of go over where we're at with the Goldsboro Union Station Stabilization Project and where they're at in the process. It's similar to this one, actually, we just talked.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have item eight point three, consideration of a design build agreement for the Goldsboro Union Station Stabilization Project. for the Goldsboro Union Station stabilization project. And I also have Joseph Franklin with me tonight from TA Loving. He's the preconstruction manager on the project. So he'll be able to answer specific questions about the agreement itself, if you have them. So for the background, the City of Goldsboro committed $375,000 from a state grant appropriation to support the stabilization of Goldsboro Union Station, an effort that will cost a projected minimum of $1.5 million. An RFQ for design-build services was released in January with a due date of February 11th. The city received three responses to the RFQ. A selection committee of city staff and project subject matter experts reviewed and evaluated the submittals individually using a rubric. The selection committee discussed their scores to produce an average final score for each value. And the team to receive the highest total score was the team led by TA Loving Construction and Michael Graves Design. Upon negotiations with the team regarding fees, budget, schedule, and scope of services, an agreement was prepared and approved by staff of the city for your review. The attached agreement has been signed by TA Loving and is ready for execution by the city upon your approval. Moving on to discussion, Phase 1 Design-Build Services will begin with a $153,912 budget for design and engineering services. That includes survey allowance, a subsurface investigative allowance, erosion control plan, and storm water management. The remaining balance of $221,000 of the city's $375,000 commitment will be directed via design-build amendment after the initial design phase is complete. Upon approval to execute the contract, TA Loving will begin work following the design phase milestone dates outlined in your agreement. Any questions?
Counsel, this is something that we have, that we've discussed before and was budgeted before. This is one piece of it. This is the, basically the paperwork side of things, saying how things are going to have to unfold once they actually get to swinging hammers and doing those things. It's an incredible undertaking, but I think it's a worthy investment that some of the council already said they were interested in doing. So with that, are there any comments, questions for Ms. Fonseca or Mr. Livingston?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
First, I want to say that I am in agreement with everything with Union Station. I'm looking forward to the sustainability and what the future holds for Union Station. I want to say that. But I did just want to ask a few questions.
Sure.
Okay, and 1.22, it says that you would be the one looking at the agreement. Is, would there be someone else looking at that?
The agreement has been reviewed by staff. So not just me, but I am the lead on the project, yes.
Then the other question is 1.1.3. It talks about the project, it's, it involves timber and all types of tubing, roofing. Will that be put back, or will we reclaim lower impact materials?
Do you want to? Yep.
I'm Joseph Franklin. Thank you for having me. And we're excited, TA Loving's excited to be a part of this project. We've been here 100 years. We celebrated that this year and excited to be a part of what's happening here in Goldsboro. We, we want to try to do our best to buy the standards of historical preservation to go through that process. And that's one of the reasons we hired Michael Graves Construction. They are a really great consultant, and they've done Union Stations and other cities. So that, what that'll do is it gives us an opportunity to utilize some materials that are going to be less costly but will meet that historical criteria, but also to try to repurpose and reuse some of the materials that are currently there. Does that answer?
It does.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I just want to hear that. And then the other thing, the National Carolina Erosion Plan, is that part of your phase, or have you already submitted that, or is that part of Phase 1?
It's part of Phase 1.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Counsel, any other comments, questions? So this is presented for conversation this evening, and we can do one of two things. This is old business that we have already seen, you know, once before, but this is the first time we've seen the final contract. We can either entertain a motion to allow me to execute the contract as presented this evening. We cannot?
Resolution for it.
If you have a motion stating it, okay.
Normally, we do our.
Well, you can give a motion to have a resolution to do it, and then it can be drafted and signed after. So you can go ahead and do the motion. And a motion to the resolution be drafted approving the mayor to sign and execute the agreement. And that, and the resolution can be executed after it's passed and after the meeting, so.
Consent agenda, next meeting? All right.
Yes, please.
All right. This item, seeing no objection from counsel, this item will be on our consent agenda for our next meeting and be approved as part of the consent agenda. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, thank you. All right, item 8 dot 4, Mr. Livingston.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an update on a citizen survey. Octavius will be briefing us on that, this, where we're at and what the next steps are.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor, pro temp, counsel, stay. I have agenda item 8.4 tonight. We'll be providing the council with a brief update on where we are as it relates to the 2025 Citizens Community Survey. On September the 8th, the mayor executed a resolution authorizing the execution of the ETC contract, well, I'm sorry, with the contract with the ETC institution for the survey. On September the 18th and September the 19th, the city manager invited staff in to review the questions that would be documented in the survey that did occur. And we are at the point now where we are moving fast towards delivery of the survey. Towards the last week or two in October, we will actually mail out the surveys to our citizens within each of your districts. Please know that the data collection process will be completed during the months of November and December. Preliminary, after the completion of the data collection process, we'll start reviewing the data that was delivered from the surveys. Discussions within the city will occur. And a final report will be completed towards the end of December. Electronic version of the presentation will be delivered to the staff. And in January 2026, we'll present that information to you. Please know that the city manager's staff has put together a robust communications plan with the goal to create awareness in the community. We've also collect, with the goal of collecting 400 responses, 65 within each district. We realize that's going to be a challenge. So a part of my responsibility will be to support you and your individual initiatives throughout your district. So please allow me to be a part of that process. From a promotional standpoint, we'll use social media, social media ads, press release, printing, advertisement, engagement of fraternal and sororities to help spread the word throughout our communities. We'll also provide a toolkit for council members to use for promoting, again, their surveys through whatever venue that you may have. So in, in a nutshell, we need your support. We need your help. We need to do whatever we can to help you individually within your districts. Any questions, any concerns?
Mr. Murphy. Hey. Quick question. You guys are going to know the exact residence that the survey goes to, right?
That is correct.
Will we, council members, have access to that? So we can help engage those specific residents while also just kind of generally encouraging people to do it? Or can we have access to specifically talk to those individuals to help them with the survey?
In order to help them understand, or to understand them better, their responses?
Or just to give a little push to make sure that they get it filled out? And then there may be individuals that we talked about who may need some extra assistance completing it?
That is a good question. I can get that answer for you, but I don't know. I know that when we get the data back and we start analyzing, when, I'm sorry, when ETC starts analyzing the results, they'll forward that information to us. And I can certainly make that information available to you. And we can choose to put together a plan of action at that point, if you choose to. So, any other questions?
Counsel, comments, excuse me?
I have a question, but thank you so much for this information. I was kind of wondering, I do have some elderly individuals that may not know how or can't access a computer. Is there any way that we can talk with them and get input?
The surveys will be mailed directly to them. They're online options, but they'll have that hard copy.
Okay, okay.
So, and we can, if for some reason the mail doesn't coincide together, we can create a way to be more effective in getting them to, and all the, just call me in.
Okay.
Yeah, and we can go from there. Other questions? Well, I would be remiss if I didn't mention to you that on October 1, we opened the application process for our Citizens Academy. So as with the years in the past, we've had a lot of success in our programming. So we encourage you to encourage your constituents to take part in the program. We've got a lot of applications coming in thus far. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, item 8 dot 4, as you can tell, is an update. It is not an action item for a vote. So with that, hearing no additional comments or questions, we'll move to new business. Mr. Livingston, this was something that we walked on at the end as this is a received grant that we were excited to be able to discuss. Mr. Livingston, if you would brief us?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. We have the IT Director Scott Williams here that'll kind of give us the details of this grant application you put in. I know we did budget funds for it and the, we thought that we would be lucky enough to get it. So we're lucky enough to get it, and I'll let Scott explain it a little bit better than I can, I'm sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, Mayor, council members. This is about approving resolution to accept grant funding through state and local government cybersecurity grant program. It's managed by North Carolina Emergency Services. The city applied for a grant back in Jan, end of January. It's really coming through federal funds managed by the state to help with cybersecurity programs for local governments and other local entities. Purpose of the request was to set up a, was a more full compliance platform for, and it basically means, look at what we're doing now, decide what's good, what's better, what's not good, find any gaps or any weaknesses we have and improve those. It also allows staff to, in addition to covering weaknesses or gaps that we may have, improve our response time through managed desktop exercises and having software, looking at what's going on and consolidating logs and things that we're looking at daily that take, saves a lot of staff time in reviewing our cybersecurity platform, as well as having consultants that will help us walk through and get the best platform compliance that we can. It's a grant, it's a 70-30 matching grant, and we were awarded $58,275. The matching funds of $24,975 are in the IT budget for this fiscal year already, so we don't have to do any kind of changes for that. And so the total program's $83,250, covers over a three-year period of time. And it's recommended council adopt a tax resolution accepting $58,275 in grant funding from North Carolina Emergency Management. You have any questions?
So the, the amount that we're receiving, $58,275, that is 70% of the $83,250. And just to restate, the remaining funds are already allocated in your budget. We don't have to go to general fund or anything like that to support this.
We budgeted the amount of money to cover it. If, if we were lucky enough to get the grant, we would have the funds in there to cover that matching portion so we didn't have to go back and try to move money around. But that was accommodated in a balanced budget.
Well, I'll say this, and then I'm going to yield the floor to the council. This is something that I feel very strongly about doing. You know, the, you guys, we look at the water and sewer plant that we operate and all the different customers that come through that. A, a bad password completely changes our water system. And so, yeah, this is something that I've been pretty consistent about. I appreciate y'all taking a hard look at some things. And I know we have some wonderful partners in this city as well that also bring their expertise. But NCEM does a fantastic job with this, so. Counsel, comments, questions? All right, so counsel, do we, at this time, entertain a motion to adopt the resolution accepting the grant funds through the North Carolina Office of Emergency Management?
So moved.
All right, motion's been made and, motion's been made and properly seconded. Probably need to put my hand right in front of your face. Motion made and properly seconded. Is there any debate? Hearing none, seeing that y'all have already started voting. I'm just glad that y'all are ahead of me. I voted in favor. It's not popping up on my screen, but I voted in favor. You can go ahead and log me in. In favor, all right, lovely. All votes, all votes being in the affirmative, the resolution is adopted. 9 dot 1 is approved.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Livingston. You briefed me earlier that you did have a fairly substantial city manager's report that you wanted to walk through, so please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to go through it pretty quickly.
You don't, you don't need to hurry. This is important stuff. This is good stuff.
Well, last week, we were notified by the state healthcare, the treasurer's office, that there's going to be a 2.4% increase that was applicable to Goldsboro going back to July 1st, that they're charging on the local government employment retirement system. So I've called John Bellis and screamed, "This is not fair." Please call the treasurer's office. I've also talked to the league of municipalities about it. We don't really know where this is going to shake out, but they're trying to identify funding. And I think they're just going to us because they've got a funding problem and a gap. And they're taking it at us, and I don't think it's right. But I'll keep you posted on it. We're the, one of the largest, if not the largest entity on the state healthcare plan, which is a good plan, nothing against that. And the rates have been stable over the years. It's just the way they've gone about this is not really that ethical, in my opinion, because they've kind of come sort of in the middle of a, well, not exactly in the middle of a budget year, but we've already started a budget year, and then they've said, "Oh, by the way, back pay this to July 1st," so.
And just to be clear, this is state health plan. This is not elders. This is state.
It's the, it's the elders person. That's one another question I have with it. They're taking the 2.4% increase then to help cover losses in not, in their elders system or potentially the state healthcare plan. It's a little odd. I don't understand the connection. I asked the league about that. They don't understand the connection either. We had a webinar set up for Wednesday, and they just canceled it automatically. So maybe we'll find out more. We're going to, we're engaged with this issue, and we'll stay engaged and do our best to try to see what we can do to change their mindset on this one.
I will interrupt you again, but I do want to ask, just for, for counsel, for the record, the amount of money that we're potentially looking at having to find current year is, when you and I were discussing, a little over 600, right?
That's correct.
Thousand, not?
600,000, and that's in the general fund, and about another 100,000 in the utility fund. About 700,000. Another issue that we've identified with this is that not all of our employees are on the state healthcare plan. So why should we, those be penalized or accounted, or counted as part of their? So we have lots of questions. We haven't got any answers yet, but we're making the phone calls. With that issue, I'll keep you updated. As aware, we're continuing our dialogue with Fremont and Eureka. I spoke with the mayor of Eureka today. I don't think they're really all that happy with Fremont's proposal. With the $5.70 per thousand gallons, they feel like that's a little high. Agree with them on that. And so we are in dialogue between Fremont and Fremont's attorney. Ron's been talking with Fremont's attorney. You know, I think that, you know, we're going to have to keep on negotiating with them. So far, we just haven't, they've come back with a proposal. So all I can tell you is that we're going to come back with a. that we're gonna come back with another proposal and we'll keep the dialogue going. Meeting with Department, um, Citywide Work Plans and Initiatives, uh, this is a quarterly that we do. Um, we, we try to drill down on what their priorities and projects are, make sure they're lined up with what the city council vision is and, and our organizational objectives. Um, so there's a lot of them out there, a lot of things, good things that I think we're doing and a lot of good projects, a lot of good priorities, you know, efficiency changes within the organization. This will, uh, when this is all completed, it'll come together and I'll be sending it to the city council as, as information, so you'll just be aware. One of those particular initiatives that you'll start seeing this week is the John Street Parking Lot Corral Improvements. We're putting those in a secure place with a fobbed key entrance, uh, you know, we've had some illegal dumping going on there in the past. Um, we will have lights, uh, cameras and, you know, the fob entrance there. That, that'll be, uh, coming over the next few months, you'll see a nice screened-in dumpster out there which will, and that's what we're trying to do everywhere. If we've got a dumpster, we did this somewhat on the other side and on Wal-Mart, screened in those dumpsters there and we feel like that's working pretty well. Um, some of you may be aware of the Kyler Best Looping Project, Hawthorne Trail, which we'll talk about in another two weeks as, and the growth and development update, is moving ahead with their project, um, but they're not gonna be on the same timeline as, as we are. We would like to move this project up a little bit faster, um, because we feel like, you know, we budgeted for funds for this year, but we feel like we can do it in-house and save some money there. So that's gonna be something we're putting together the numbers for and something we feel like we can get done by the spring of, of next year. Um, that we, you know, we're talking with the Johnson County and I think you are aware of, I haven't gotten any information back from them, but I've gotta let them know where we stand. Relocation of Parks and Recreation, uh, that infrastructure's in place now, tomorrow they'll be moving their desk and other equipment over there that they need, uh, so their administrative staff can finally breathe a sigh of relief and work in a, you know, much more expansive environment. But we are doing programming out of, out of the, out of the building, it's going very well so far. Um, and, um, along those lines also, we're moving quickly, well, relatively quickly if you're caught with, uh, I'm, I'm getting the demo done at the Brooklyn Park Center. So be thinking about how with our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, how we can incorporate the, the area there now that it's gonna be, you know, the Herman Park there or the little small administration building, so. Those have run their course. So, um, I did mention the Berkeley Royal Road realignment, you heard from people tonight, but I was just gonna say that, that, that project, um, now that it's getting, there's be several things that happen towards the end to help things out and make it look a lot better. Um, those will be addressed over the next several months, but that's just a huge project for the city and the DOT and even though it wasn't mentioned, uh, I really respect the DOT and they kinda came onto the table and brought a lot of their resources to the table to help the community out there, which I'm tremendously grateful for. As you know, we're in the middle of doing a study for PFOs, a grant study, PFOs update, those are the forever chemicals. Um, there's a certain parts per trillion that we have to meet, we're slightly above that. Um, you know, we, we expect that r-, report in, um, I guess, I said 60 months, but that's not right. Any, anyway, um, we, we expect that in a few more months. But we did en-, engage in a class action lawsuit, we've gotten about 1.0 million thus far, not sure exactly how much more, but there won't be a whole lot more coming from that, from what I understand. I don't see there's gonna be a lot of changes in the regulations, uh, some people that I've talked to, so I think we're gonna have to comply with those limits. The estimated cost on this upgrade is $30 million, that's not, that's not good news. But that's, that's what it is and, um, you know, and so we're, that's just, and it's estimated still the two-year compliance window. I'm sure they'll kick this down because I, I, this is a tremendous, uh, it's new technology some that they're, they're looking at that may reduce the cost, but that's where we're at right now. About a month ago, you asked me to look into a, a security survey, recommendations for this building, um, I put those in there, won't really go into those tonight, they're just attached, we can talk about them at another date. Um, there's an ongoing investigation and since that's something we talked about in closed session, I won't, with the fire department HR, won't go into that. ACM update, we had 147 applicants, so that's good. It's nice to know that people are, are looking at Goldsboro and saying, I'd like to work there. We've narrowed that down, those candidates down to 15, uh, we've provided those, uh, recommendations to development associates who's gonna be running an assessment center for us. So we're working on and reviewing the development assessments, uh, development associates' assessment center materials right now and approving those and tweaking those as we feel like is needed. The ideal candidate we're looking for will have strong management, finance, budgeting, project management, leadership skills. And that's all I have. Any questions for me, Mayor, council?
Council, these are all things that have been touched on in various conversations, but, uh, Mr. Livingston wanted to get them, you know, itemized in front of everybody. There's a lot of things going through his desk right now, you know, we have a, a very busy set of department heads right now. All right, hearing none, we will move into mayor and council member comments. It is the first meeting of the month, so we will begin with the council, uh, councilmen to my right. Sir, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seeing as we have blazed through this meeting in record time, who am I to keep us but just a second? So I'll be real brief. Um, I wanna touch on National Night Out to remind everyone to be sure and come out, uh, to that tomorrow, I'm not gonna say anymore, I'm sure the mayor's gonna wanna speak in further detail about that. Um, one other thing is fire prevention week, this week, and, um, I witnessed an incident, fortunately it was not in Goldsboro this weekend, while I was out of town, at a, a fire engine come up to a decent-sized intersection and nobody would get out of that fire engine's way or couldn't figure out what to do to get out of that crew's way. And I know that our fire chief has been before us and said this, that for every 60 seconds that a fire continues to burn, it doubles in size. So if you see a fire truck coming your way, move over, please. Uh, life and, and property depends on that. I mean, that, think about that, every 60 seconds the fire doubles in size and how important that could be if it was your emergency. So when you see our public safety vehicles coming, please move over and get out of the way. Last but not least, thank you to all of our city employees, each and every one of you, you're all valued and appreciated, this city would not and could not run without you. That's all my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman, floors yours.
No comment tonight.
Councilman, break in, floors yours.
Yes, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna, under, but first, I, I want to say that it was an honor to go to the 60th anniversary of the Delta Sorority on this weekend and I wanna thank these ladies for, uh, their unwavering commitment to academic excellence and for the inspiration through generations, uh, to this commu-, to this community. And it was an awesome event and that's all I'm gonna say, I'm gonna let you say. We've already talked about anti-bullying, but as a member of the, um, National Association of, um, Adults Against Bullying, I asked the community to rally around this campaign. There's no need for any type of bullying and, and it was addressed in the, in, in the proclamation resolution, I'm not, I'm not gonna go into that, but bullying is an unwanted aggression, aggressive behavior. Uh, child bully becomes an adult bully and I, this one thing that I do each year and throughout the year is visit the schools and talk about bullying and the effects that it has on a child. Uh, you would be surprised, that phrase that six and stones will hurt my, you know, don't hurt you, that is not true for some children. Uh, a lot of suicides have occurred because of bullying in the school, so we need to start early so that they don't become adult bully. So please join me as well as my Continental Sisters as we go through, uh, the different schools and talk about, uh, bullying. The next thing is red ribbon. We also go to the, uh, community and talk about red ribbon and the effects of drugs. And I think it's a great time for it to, October, because during the October, there's a lot of candy that is being given out and I'm gonna ask your parent, you parents, to please, please check the candy because sometimes it is laced with drugs. And there is a particular candy that looks just like a Laffy Taffy and if I was growing up, I would've had some of that candy. So just really be careful, if you are going to, um, go out trick-or-treating or doing any type of Halloween festivities, please, parents, please check that wrapped candy. I would appreciate it and, um, you will too because there was an incident where, uh, one of my friend's, um, grandchild got hold of lace candy, it was fentanyl, and he died that night. So it's very, very important that we do that. And then last not, last but not least is, uh, breast cancer. It is very difficult to watch someone that you love die from cancer. The challenges and the struggles that they go through and the misdiagnosed, my mother died of cancer in 1986. She was misdiagnosed with bursitis and had, I'm not continued to talk to the doctor about her symptoms, they would not have relooked at it and they found that she had breast cancer and she died six months later. So I'm asking the adult children that have parents, please check on your parents and whenever they go to the doctor, they might get angry with you, but especially that, that mom, that sister, you know, ask them to please get checked. It's very important. And last, I'd like to thank the city staff for all that you do. I appreciate it.
Councilman, floors yours.
No comment.
Councilman, floors yours.
We look forward to seeing all of you guys tomorrow night at National Night Out and, um, I just wanted to thank the mayor and the council for the, um, Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation as well. Education is key and early screening is key. I myself, um, attribute an early screening and education to saving my life. Um, I did have to have a lump removed and had to have surgery and so it is so imperative that we all do, um, self-examinations and we do them regularly and then also, um, education. I'm, I'm so grateful to this council that you brought that awareness to the community because I attribute education and early detection and that surgery to saving my life. So I'm grateful that you would bring that, um, awareness up tonight.
Councilman, floors yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank, um, the city for tearing down that duplex on, on, um, Berkeley-Goldenbar. I really appreciate that.
I knew you'd be happy with it.
Yes, sir, I was.
I told you it was.
I stopped and talked to him. Um, on the 15th of November at Wayne Community College, there'll be a Stop the Bleed class. If you are interested, Stop the Bleed is the first response if we have some type of significant, um, trauma, uh, far as, uh, tourniquets and things of that nature. It's a certification, um, class, it's free, it's, um, being sponsored by the Kappa's out at, um, the, uh, Wayne Community College, it is free. We just ask that you, uh, go on the website, on our website and just, just sign up so we can get your name, so we can put it in the registry, so we can have your certificates available. Also, uh, this weekend, uh, we had the pleasure of, uh, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority as well as Kappa Alpha Psi and the Gold Wayne Alumni Chapter of, uh, Winston-Salem State University had the pleasure of taking 26 people up to, um, Winston-Salem State this weekend on an open house visit and, um, it was awesome to see the kids' eyes and, and the entertainment that they, um, provided for those kids. And now through that, it was a seed that's been planted and our youngest one that went, who's in the sixth grade, came, he emailed me th-, this morning and said, listen, I think I wanna be around. So, so, so just investing in those kids at that young age makes a big difference. Thank you.
That's, that's the point, right there. A lot of you guys know right now, um, my son, my family, we are, we're dual-sporting, we've got baseball going on and we've got soccer going on. And a neat thing happened out at Brian Mill Sports Complex that follows right in line with what the, what the councilman just said. We finished up soccer game and as we were leaving, um, look over and I see a group of about 20 kids lined up, uh, obviously practicing 7-on-7 flag football and there's three officers standing around them. And I'm kinda just walking over there, just kinda curious 'cause it's like, they're coaching, it's like, wait a minute, what? GPD sponsoring one of the flag football teams and it's a bunch of kids from Southside, I knew, I knew a couple of them, got to walk over there, kinda say, hey? But like I said, um, you know, we had just finished a soccer game on one of the, one of the coaches over there 'cause of all the free time I have apparently. And, um, it's pretty fantastic, you know, when you walk by and you see that, you know, GPD that obviously has to be the stick sometimes, is also acknowledging that you've got to be the carrot, you've got to put the work in, you've got to validate these kids and these families and to the officers, y'all know who you are, I won't get into that right now, but, um, that's awesome. I'll just put it that way. That's, investing in kids and in families, that's fantastic. It is, is how we turn the corner in our community. Um, National Nights, our, National Night Out has already been touched on, see everyone later this week. I'm gonna close with this, uh, to the Deltas who had a fantastic anniversary event Saturday night at the Maxwell Center, phenomenal job, job well done, the leadership, the regional director who was, uh, regional vice president who was in town, amazing conversation, please don't stop doing good things. And St. James Amy Zion Church, again, 160 years, absolutely amazing work, please don't stop, please do not stop. Look forward to celebrating, uh, later this week on the actual date of that anniversary. That concludes my comments. Still, still have a closed session, right? No, I've decided not to come up or something. I'm honored. All right, uh, with that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's been made and properly seconded, you adjourn, there's not a motion that has debate, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, seeing none, motion passes.